Ladies and gentlemen, would please take your seats so that we can get started. Okay, um, everyone, here's a section on the school portion for the registered voters. There is a section to my right, we need a divisional state meeting for registered voters. Non-voters are meeting to the very back. I'll just unmute him and then I'll talk about our officials in the department that is voted to my right. The hour is seven o'clock, I want to get started. My vote tonight is to try to get through our town meetings as quickly as possible. Um, I hope you will be with me because I'm hoping to mentor for all of your moderators throughout the state. And, uh, some of them have a form of three hundred, so plenty for things like that. We had quite legislation and it's been very interesting. And I want to thank our two assistants because these guys are a lot of our moderators. Uh, so that we have a capacity to listen to the voice. Because as you know, unless we have a fight about it, we don't have a time on our own. So I'm going to ask you all to take your seats. Um, the town court has certified to me that the warrant is duly posted. So I am going to wait the reading of the warrant so that we can move forward. So I ask you all now to please stand as soon as the flag will be raised and stand up. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic of which this stands. One may be under oath, and it is hoped that with the reading, you will have this oral. Uh, I would like you to take a moment of silence to remain standing. I have to put my glasses on and I'll be able to give a bit more of a... Um, I want to flag that for some of the members in our community who have stepped up to the plate and served this town. Um, Dr. Thomas Gleason. Uh, Dr. Gleason, uh, was a coach for the Bayway Bay Blue, William Cougars, baseball team and a member of the race of Columbus. The town of Wayne, New York, for the last many years. The Bliss Band Foundation, the Way of Ninefold, St. Vincent de Paul Society, the St. Patrick's Church. He has recently passed away and certainly will be blessed as well. Uh, Jamie Venus, who was a foster grandparent that came into the Michaela School and for several years, uh, worked with children for reading in her second and third graders. Mary Montan, who is the cafeteria worker of Wayne Public Schools. She served in the cafeteria for many, many years and was loved by all the students. Althea Lawrence, uh, Althea Lawrence started her career, a law tester, as a dispatcher uh, for the Fire Department or Police Department. And then came to Wayne and, um, served as a police matron for the Wayne Police Department. For I would say probably about over fifty years if I remember correctly. And just in the past, they still have peace. Kenny was the vice chair of the conservation commission. Started with Wayne by the convention committee for ten years. And on the Wayne Police Department for about five years. And he was a qualified fighter for the town for thirty-four years. So if we just take a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. This meeting did not need help under normal circumstances. And we hope that you'll understand that we tried our best to do this today for those of you who are here. We appreciate the coming tonight. As I said a few minutes ago, unless we take action on certain problems, the town is not going to be able to move forward after a period of... We come together tonight as civil assembly as community in a tradition that's older than the council itself. With here tonight to make decisions about our community as we deliberate. Let us remember that our neighbors with whom we might disagree are great people with hopes and dreams of yours, just like ours. In addition, let us remember that in the end, caring for each other in this community is of far greater importance than any differences or difference of opinion that we may have. As we deliberate, let us say tonight, maintain an open mind and open heart and stability with one another. For all of you who discuss the times, please be mindful that our doctors, nurses, emergency persons, volunteers, fire, police, community leaders, educators, neighbors, and friends need our support to help get through all the difficulties that are happening now. So let's come together tonight as a strong, resilient community. And again, thank you for coming. I'd like to introduce our town clerk, who's the mayor's secretary, Michelle Wilson Black. Our town consul, uh, Chairman Richard Bowe. Uh, Mr. Clay, Chairman of the Finance Committee, Larry Kitchen. Uh, Chairman Wood is the white man, Patrick Tocantino. And Dr. Sullivan, our town administrator on my side, all right. I'm going to try to expedite this community a little bit so nothing goes wrong with the remarks that everyone will do during our meeting. But they're all in fact. So those of you who will be coming, we know what they are. If not, they're in the red anymore. I'm going to ask for a motion to set that. The proponent will have time to speak. All right, and then two minute, I'll open it up to debate. It'll be a two minute time limit for anyone else who wants to speak. There is only one amendment at any time on the floor. Now, a little different, we don't have microphones up front, but we do have ones that will bring the microphone to you if we wish to speak. So what you need to do is, once you speak, you just need to raise your hand, and it will send the word to you. The microphone will be disinfected because we have a person speaking. Uh, I'm not sure, I checked a little while ago, like, at that time, we do not have anybody else in the other room? Joe, is there anyone in the back door? Okay, we do, we do have a little available for people who were not able to make, wear a mask or for some reason, we didn't want to wear one. So I do have some communication with that one. So if somebody is in that room, like some of the volunteers, if they want to speak, they just need to put the moderator, the deputy moderator, you know, and not get a two-way radio up here and put work the night out. Please, turn off your cell phones. There's been a lot of discussion about what we need to do to move forward for articles in the board that we need to act on, expeditionally, others that probably could wait to a later time. So we're to put many articles into a consent agenda and I will go through that. And I hope that you'll bear with us, you know, as we explain it, but it's a way of trying to get as many articles done with one way to vote as we can. The other thing is normally, we would take up our articles in watering. Tonight, I would, um, ask that you might bear with me and grant me a waiver to remove the suspension of doing our, our articles in watering because when we get through the consent agenda, we probably will only have four or five articles that would come out on the floor for this meeting. And especially probably two or three. So if this didn't make any sense to me that we should take the time to take the watering. So unless someone objects, I would ask for a motion to suspend the lottery. And a motion in the second, although it's a vote, may you say aye? Others oppose? Okay, we move over to the consent agenda. So consent agenda, these are fewer articles that we usually, that are ready to include in our annual extract from the U.R. They usually, the most hot articles that come up every year that don't generate questions are happening today. So we're actually going to vote all of the articles separately. Uh, we'll put this, we put them into a consent agenda. Uh, some of them, you'll be asked to remove the article directly. And then the rest of the articles are all of those articles that the board of selectmen decided that they could put off until a future meeting. So I'm going to read the consent agenda, the articles that are on the agenda. If you have a question to it or want to discuss it, we will take it out and then we will take it up in a normal routine. So if, if, as I go through it, and I, and I come to an article that you want to pull out of the consent agenda, hold your card out and rely on it to come back to that. So the first one in, uh, the consent agenda is Article Two, which is recurring business up article that allows the board of selectmen, um, or the town administrator to accomplish the legal and administrative details necessary for entry of contracts and agreements, uh, to do grants, uh, to enter the compensating balance, to hear the course of which your ID, tonight, you may also administer the subject program to our community development. So I can see anybody who wanted to pull that one out? Okay. Article number three is compensation for certain officials. This article comes out every year, it has not changed since last year. This is, um, for the salary level of the town court. For the registered moderator, the town court salary is seventy-five thousand, seven hundred, seven hundred. The registered star is seven hundred dollars, and the town moderator gets a hundred and twenty dollars for the... See, you know, one want to take that one, we'll leave that in. Article five four is revolving funds. This is a housekeeping article that authorizes continuance to several revolving funds. It allows ongoing use of authorized money for specific activities in the town. And it's typically established for one-time usage of cash at the meet, at the town meeting. And then as we plan this year, we use it for fundraising. Um, so it's an ongoing source of funding for different activities that we have throughout the year. It has no way back from our taxes. We'll leave that in. Emergency medical services project, this article authorizes the town to pay a sum of money to the general account for salary and other expenses necessary for the operation of our EMS service. This article further authorizes anticipated revenues received when emergency medical services are used in offset staff, for that offset of salary and other expenses. So in other words, what comes in, uh, for, from the, what the emergency medical services does in annual grants that pays for their salaries and expenses. Article fifty is community preservation reserve. Again, this is an article that comes out every year. Um, they are required by law to reserve at least ten percent of the fiscal year's estimated revenue for the stewardship preservation of water housing, open space grants, to allocate five percent of the estimated revenue for this budget. The fiscal year 2021 estimated revenue is about a million dollars and the total amount of this budget will be around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Okay, we'll leave that one in. Article sixteen is the harbor services permits received for jerk appropriation account. And this, um, allows the harbor master, um, to make his payments on a vehicle that was purchased a year ago. The, um, payment is twenty-two thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. Um, there is also a hundred payment for the fines for the car, a payment amount of two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So you'll see when we get to the motions, I'll read the motions of, to accept those. And then, uh, within the consent agenda for all of the other articles that the selectmen have, the chairman definitely not take out this meeting. So those will be Article five, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. So these were all nonviolent articles that the, the board of selectmen, the board has to make myself consultation without time to determine the town administrator, but we put off. Somebody want to bring up a microphone?
I can probably be loud enough to hear you with a mask.
No, we need, in order for us to record it, we do.
I just have a question about Article fourteen, the going passover word's letter standing out as time sensitive. And if we do not adopt the new theme on that, so some homeowners may find themselves without coverage in the event of catastrophic event. And I just want to make sure that if we're passing it over, it...
I'm sorry, okay, we'll get to the discussion. So you want to take out Article fourteen?
Yes, please.
Okay, we'll pull that out and we will come back to that. So we have a consent agenda for you and a motion on the screen. Um, the exception of Article fourteen. Bernie, would you like to read the motion for the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam Honorable, we would the town vote to approve Article two, recurring business. Also approve Article three, officials' compensation. For the town court's salary of seventy-five thousand, registered star at seven hundred, and the town moderator at one hundred and twenty dollars per day. Also approve Article four, revolving funds, as mentioned in the warrant. Also approve Article eight, and we would the town vote to approve the amount of one minute, three hundred and sixteen thousand, sixteen dollars to the emergency medical services salary and wages account. Three hundred and eighty-five thousand, eighty-nine dollars to the EMS general expense account. Further, to authorize the self-money and estimated receipt of the emergency medical services account to be used to offset set appropriation in accordance with the Mass General Law Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three P. Also approve Article fifteen, community preservation, as presented in the warrant. And approve Article sixteen, harbor services account, as presented in the warrant. And natural Article five, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and seventeen, two twenty-two.
I have a second?
I have it.
Your motion before us in a second, and the consent agenda, there is a discussion. It passes, although the debate will be closed. Although opposed, it passes by the majority. Okay, so we're going to move on. Um, we do have a special meeting because we have those at seven thirty, but, um, we do have time. I think that we could, um, take up the upper K Regional Technical School, which is something we always give a courtesy to, uh, the principal of our school to present that because they have five towns that they have to go to and there are other meetings going on. So, uh, we will take up, if, uh, one of them, come forward, please. This is Article nine. Do you want? In the next couple of minutes, a lot of them to report, maybe you can use my, um, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Honorable. My name is Ronald Porchat, and I'm the second superintendent and principal of Upper K Tech. And I'd like to thank all of you and the town of Wareham for your support. Uh, you have in the past supported Upper K, uh, to the greatest ability. And I really appreciate, as I hope you were warned this evening, the recognition by the fin, the finance committee, uh, for Upper K Tech. In an effort, because very timely, very short, and a lot getting into full details. Uh, but I asked, are there any questions about our budget that I could help to expedite? Okay, all right, well, thank you again. We really appreciate the town of Wareham and I appreciate you being able to all of this. Uh, you're calling me up, moving forward. Thank you, Madam Honorable.
Thank you. Um, I just need to try to put it in our head, the moderator, so that you'll connect with the word. Joe, do you have a question, Madam Honorable? Thank you. I just want to make sure that if we did, we can count on your votes. So I have a motion for Article five, please.
Madam Honorable, we would the town vote to raise and appropriate three million, seven hundred and three thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars as a share in operating capital costs of the Upper Upper K Cobb Rebootable Petal High School District for the fiscal year 2021, July one, 2020 through June, January, 2021.
I have a motion in second to, uh, Article nine. If anyone wishes to speak? Seeing no one, I will now call for a vote. Um, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Anyone oppose? Which unanimous? Okay, the next article that we would be taking out would be our town budget. I don't know if it's clear that we wrote one, it's not, but the other one, um, okay? Yeah, Article fourteen, it's pulled up in the consent agenda. Let me get that one, thank you. So Article fourteen. Article fourteen is the fewer flood. Um, should you speak to the article?
Madam Honorable, um, the information is that we have a theme that has extended the hook to new maps. Um, we are in what's known as the K Cobbstown area. And no further action needs to be taken like that. So I'm trying to pass over this article.
Okay. I, may I have a motion, please? For a second? And the motion to pass over this article, if you weren't able to hear the town administrator. This was one of those articles that we thought we would have to have passed before July twenty-second. Through the efforts of, uh, some of the local selectmen, and that's municipal association and another group. They worked with the federal government, uh, to take that restriction off. And there's some legislation going through that would allow them to take care of this and do not have a meeting. So I have a motion on the floor to pass over. Is anyone wish to speak? Seeing no one, I will now call for a vote. The motion for you is to pass over Article fourteen. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? Which unanimous? Okay, let's, uh, I think we could probably get Article ten again. Article ten is the water pollution control facility enterprise town. Should we speak to the article?
Madam Honorable, we would the town vote to appropriate seven million, twenty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars from a water pollution control facility of the PCF Enterprise Revanchers and one million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars from WPCF Federation Reserve to defray the PCF direct cost. And that eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars has appropriated under Article seven of the spring 2020 annual accounting to use for WPCF indirect costs to fund the total fiscal year 2021 operation cost of a water pollution control facility enterprise fund.
We have a second? Article is now before you, Article ten, this is for water pollution control facility enterprise fund. Can you speak to the article?
Thank you, Madam Honorable, this is the, uh, the overall rating budget for the water pollution control facility. Uh, pretty much what you said, see year in, year out. You will see that one portion within this budget, there contains one point one million dollars of capital items. You will separately approve those in another budget, in another, uh, part of it because this is the one that will fund it. The next article, the budget, please be first. Thank you.
Anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for a vote. Motion for you is to appropriate seven million, twenty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars from the water pollution control facility enterprise revenues and one million, two hundred and eight, one thousand, eight hundred and eight from water pollution control evidence revenue, better with the drugs to defray the water pollution control facility direct cost. And that eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three is appropriated under Article seven of the spring 2020 annual accounting to use for the water pollution control facility indirect cost to fund the total fiscal year 2021 operation cost of the water pollution control facility and that price, find the sum of the price, and vote. Please hold your cards. Anyone oppose? Which unanimous? I think we do, Article six. Article six, have a question. Should we pick that one? We're on Article six, and a motion?
Madam Honorable, I move the town vote to authorize the FY twenty-one capital plan near Saddle. Be dark and put the PCF into the water pollution control facility. Complete the design of a force main for Narrows Pump Safety Treatment Plant cost of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, funding charges FY twenty-one with the PCF budget capital line. Also WPCF mine steel force main scanning and two con testing of force main. Cost of one hundred and fifty thousand, funding charges in FY twenty-one with the PCF budget capital line. Also WPCF with theirs to clarify the one and two, replace driving, inspect, and when needed, repair, adjust drums, scrape it from the ad half, or buffer, half. Cost of two hundred and fifty thousand from FY twenty-one with the PCF budget capital line. Also WPCF rehab red grill at Narrows Pump Station, including adding new brine. Cost of one hundred and fifty thousand, funding charges FY twenty-one with the PCF budget capital line. And laxity of the PCF cost portion of grants for the new line basis and residencies viewed of the Narrows Pump Station. Of four hundred thousand, funding charges FY twenty-one with the PCF budget capital line. Total of one million, one hundred thousand.
I have a motion before us in a second for Article six, the capital plan. All right, it is upon me, your, the warrant. Is there anything to be said on Article six? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for a vote. All right, only four thirty vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? Which unanimous? I think that brings us up to, we've got seven thirty, if we can go into the special one. That will only be the one article that we have to come back to, uh, in the annual, if you can, if you'd like. So I am going to recess this meeting and go into the special time meeting. Because people just don't want to press. And again, the, uh, warrant has been duly posted. And again, we have a consent agenda for the special time meeting that we, you know, we'll go through, just like the other one. If there's anything that's been much needed out, we do have a motion up on the screen that will take you to the conversation of what motion should be. So I will now open the special time meeting. We will go to the consent agenda. The first article in the consent agenda, the budget transfers. On the, as I said in the meeting, there was one that's been going on, able to create a way that would help town to get through this campaign. Um, so the actual 2020 campaign through this act of progress, it's based by the state's charities. The state is already developed from the public I P. And allow them to transfer money from their 2019 budget to the budget lines presented in your warrant. Um, this will allow them to pay the bills that are happening since April, uh, due to the process. Any hope on that? The second one is Article two, which is the under parking program. This is an annual article which comes out very single year to put money into the parking program line item. Seeing no one. Article four is the transfer of available funds. This will be transferred to the, from certified free cash to unemployment. That obviously going forward, the town is probably going to have some need to...
Retail alcohol sales license for malt beverages.
No, this is fifteen. Fifteen, Water Pollution Control Facility.
Oh, fifteen? Where have I lost track of fifteen? Thank you. My apologies. Article fifteen. I move that the town approve and fund contracts for the AFSCME Council ninety-three, AFL-CIO, Local Thirty, Wareham Library Employees, and the Wareham Dispatchers Union, NEPBA.
Have a second? Is there anything to speak to the article?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. These contracts do go from the beginning of this fiscal year and go out through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. It is for the librarians and then additionally, the police dispatchers. Both of these would be two percent annual increases. I would like everyone to know, if you've read some of the beginning statement in the administration handout, the library union has accepted two percent reduction in pay for next fiscal year through furloughs, and we are actively negotiating with the dispatchers as well. So in case anybody thought this would be a conflict for next fiscal year. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article fifteen? Seeing no one standing, I'll now take a vote on Article fifteen. The motion before you is to move that the town approve and fund the contracts for AFSCME Council ninety-three, AFL-CIO Local Thirty, the Wareham Library Employees, and the Wareham Dispatchers Union. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? It is unanimous. I think the only one that we have left is sixteen. I know. You have to... We respect, with all of the emails that go back and forth and all of the changes that happen right up until four-thirty of today, sometimes it's difficult to keep track with everything, so don't... Please don't apologize. So Article sixteen. Article sixteen is a home rule petition to permit the issuance of a license for retail sale of alcohol at Stone Path Malt. May I have the motion?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the state legislature for a retail alcohol sales license for malt beverages. Said beverages containing malts produced at the premises known as eleven Kendrick Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, and said retail alcohol sales license be exercised only at the premises situated at eleven Kendrick Road, Suite A, Wareham, Mass.
Do I have a second? I have a second to speak to the article. Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator, and thank everybody for coming out tonight. Stone Path Malt has been in operation for the past few years. They've opened up what has become a very successful taproom in their facility where you can go and they will pour beers for you, and you can drink beer. What they are seeking to do here is something that current state law makes a little bit strange. They're seeking to also sell packaged goods made with their malts. Typically, people who are involved in the beer industry can get a pub license, a pub brewer license, where they brew the beer on the premises. You know, you go into these places, you see the big tanks and whatnot, and so on and so forth. The difficulty for Stone Path Malt is that they are not a brewer, so they don't qualify for a pub license. Another license is also called a farmer's license, where home brewers can go around to, you know, the various fairs and so on and so forth and sell beers. Well, that wasn't going to work for them either. The third difficulty for them is that nobody is allowed to have two liquor licenses at one premises. This is why you can't go into a package store, sit down at the bar, drink some beers, and then walk out with a six-pack. So what Stone Path is proposing to do here is to segregate a portion of their building, make it completely separate from the remainder of the building, put in a cooler, have separate cash register, have separate accounting, and so on and so forth. What we're thinking about doing in the interim before the state acts is issuing them a seasonal license for the sale of packaged goods, so that they can get started fairly quickly once they get through the various approvals and permits at the local level. Long term, we will need to create a year-round license for them, which is why we need to go to the state legislature to do this, because we simply don't have any left to give out once they're ready to go year-round. So that's why this article is before you. I'd like to especially thank Selectman Manis for his work on this. He spoke with the director of the State Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission and found out from the director what would be acceptable to the state, because, you know, we can pass anything we want, the legislature can pass stuff, but if Ralph says no, the answer is no. So I'm very appreciative that Selectman Manis reached out and took care of that. So that's pretty much it for the article. But while I have the mic, I would like to acknowledge the town administrator and the town moderator, chairman of the Board of Selectmen, chairman of the Finance Committee, town clerk, and town council for helping to put this meeting together, and especially the moderator. You know, we're not in our usual digs. She had to meet with everybody from the Board of Health, Police, the whole nine yards to come up with a safe environment. She's put in double the work for what's probably going to be the fastest town meeting ever, and I'd like to acknowledge her and thank her for that.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article sixteen? On my left, someone want to bring a microphone?
I heard it was going to be an annual license. I was wondering if there should be a timeframe in this motion to define it as an annual malt beverage license? Just asking whether or not it should be defined as a seasonal or an annual.
The article itself is only for a petition to the legislature.
What does that mean? Sorry? Does it mean it's going to be implemented when it comes back?
This will have to go to the state. They'll have to work it through the legislature for approval. So once that comes back, then it would be up to the Board of Selectmen to follow up and do as what Peter said, I believe. Can I answer her question?
Thank you.
Through you to the previous speaker, Madam Moderator. This is the way we have always petitioned the legislature for what we call premises articles, which are articles beyond the actual count that the state allows us to have. So we've done this several times over the past years, and the article doesn't specify the nature of the alcohol license necessarily. It just, in terms of whether it's seasonal or whether it's a full-time license, this is typically how we've done it.
Gentleman on my left?
Madam Moderator, Dom Camerano. What would be the financial benefit to the town by this license? Because this company here has gotten a tremendous boost from the town tax incentives and everything. What do we expect to be the financial rewards of us going through all this for this company? Thank you.
To answer the question? We have a microphone up front, please.
Madam Moderator, to answer the question?
We got one coming.
I'm sorry. Additional tax revenue?
I wanted to give the gentleman on my left a microphone, please, so that we all can hear the question.
I knew that.
They do not...
Wait a minute, just a minute.
I'm sorry.
I knew that. That's a simple answer, but, you know, approximate sales, I mean, is it worth our effort is maybe the better question.
To answer the question, Mr. Manis?
Retail sale of alcohol is not taxed, so there'd be no additional revenues generated from that. I just wanted to answer the question. And I have to say, it's a lot to do going through a home rule petition and petitioning the legislature to do this. I did work, spoke with a few people today, and worked with Selectman Titlebaum to change it from just a beer and wine license to a malt beverage license, in particular utilizing only their malts. So it's restrictive. It provides them a benefit. Additional generation for income for the town, you know, maybe they'll sell a few more pints, I don't know, but for the retail sales, none as far as I know. I looked it up. Thank you.
Thank you for the answer. Does anyone else wish... On my left, microphone?
Amanda Cobb, Precinct Three. I'd like to just say that the establishment in question has been extremely generous to the community. As an example, the Onset Bay Association, they've donated their premises, and they are very community-facing. So even if there's not anything directly, you know, to the bottom line, I think they definitely support all of Wareham.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article sixteen? Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote. We have before you Article sixteen, the home rule petition to permit the issuance of a license for retail sale of alcohol at Stone Path Malt. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please hold your cards up. All those opposed? Passes by a majority. I believe that concludes our special town meeting. I will accept a motion to dissolve the special town meeting.
Move to dissolve the warrant.
I have a second. The special town meeting has been dissolved and is now closed, and we will go back to our annual meeting. And I believe we only have one article left, which will be the budget, which is Article ten?
Seven.
Seven, sorry. Hang on one second, just let me flip the pages so I have where we are. I believe this is our last article. May I have a motion on Article seven, please?
I apologize. I'll start over. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate from levy, state, and local receipts the sum of fifty-seven million, sixty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars, transfer one hundred and forty thousand from the available funds, transfer six hundred thousand from the stabilization fund, and transfer eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars from the Water Pollution Control Enterprise Fund to fund the FY twenty-one budget as presented in the administration handout.
I have motion before us in a second on Article seven to speak to the article. Our town administrator?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. If everybody could pull out the document called Administration Handout. I know you have not had a lot of time to read this, and I think out of courtesy, I will spare me reading it to you for the next five minutes. There is some information in there that's pretty good to explain what we've gone through the process. So simply, if everybody remembers, we essentially had our budget set at one point. Then COVID-19 came along and has changed lots of things, lots of things in our lives and financial impacts. We're seeing some pretty dire projections out of the Commonwealth, which will impact our state aid. We've used assumptions of a ten percent reduction. It could go higher. That's one of the reasons you saw, probably heard earlier in the year, we started a spending freeze on the town side, and actually, a few days before we enacted it, the superintendent enacted a spending freeze on the school side as well. So together, we've been trying to make sure that we can put back as much as possible into the pot for the town, if you will. The reason that being important is every year, we set the budget on assumptions of revenue. For example, last year, when we set the budget in April, we did not get a finalized state budget, I believe, until a little past July. Some of the state assessments were higher, some of the choice assessments and such, but we were able to weather that because we knew we had enough within our general fund. So, you know, this budget, when we went through the process, we're also doing something you've never seen me advocate before, which was take money out of the stabilization fund. At one point in this community about ten years ago, you had ninety thousand dollars in the stabilization fund. When I came on board, it was roughly four hundred thousand. Today, we have a little over three point seven million, and that's from the leadership of the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, the School Committee, and youth town meeting. So I appreciate everything you've done over the last eight years. We are going into potentially a one-to-two-year, very difficult situation. None of us appreciate a level-funded budget. My name was probably used as a swear a few times with some of the budget committees. So, like I said, this has not been the best budget cycle. We haven't had to do a complete one-eighty on a budget before, but I appreciate everybody, their hard work, the superintendent especially. Thank you, Dr. Shaverwood. All our department heads and the boards and committees, everybody. So thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, usually the way we do the budget is I go by different sections to see if anyone has a question. For the past two or three meetings, we've done that. It takes a little bit of time, and no one's ever had a question. So what I'm going to do is just try to take a quick poll. Is there anybody that has a question on the budget? Okay, I have three people. I think what I'm going to do is just to let them ask their question, and then we can... Four people. So I'm leery to do this because I know the answer I got one time. The gentleman on my right, which is your question, please.
Just a quick question. To move money from stabilization, I require a two-thirds vote?
To answer the question?
Was the question requires a two-thirds vote?
Yes, it will require a two-thirds vote. May I have your name, please?
Still Joe Dizik.
Thank you. On my left?
Thank you, Sandy Slaven, Precinct Three. It's the school budget. I know we don't have the details, but I read an article that a half a million dollars of COVID aid is going to be used for salaries. My question is, where will the funding come for the PPE that will be used in our school next year?
To answer the question? No question? Okay. I think it's behind you, a microphone. Mr. Flaherty, please stand. You had a question?
Mike Flaherty, Precinct One. I just have a question. I had asked this question, and Mr. Sullivan was trying to answer it for me, but it was just before the meeting. I'm not sure I quite understand it. We, as a school committee, you know, voted a level of service, level-funded budget. It included many cuts. Many positions were cut. Some of the newspapers, I'm not going to rehash it, but by the end of this year, we're looking to return to the town some four hundred thousand-plus dollars, mostly due to transportation that wasn't needed. And I just want to understand the process, the mechanism, on how that works, where that money is going to end up, and if there's any opportunity for the down the road for next year for the schools to reclaim it, to bring our staffing back. And I have union personnel asking me this question quite a bit, and I don't know the answer.
To answer his question?
Mike, which I'm sorry, I couldn't understand.
So basically, I'm asking what's going to... How does the process work? What's the mechanism? When the schools return at the end of this year some four hundred thousand-plus dollars to the town, is there any way for later on, depending on how things go, for the schools to reclaim that money to bring back some staffing? Because we've got some really dire needs, especially at the middle school, and I just don't understand how that works. I've got the unions asking me, if we have all this money, why are we looking at layoffs and furloughs and freezes? And I just like to understand how that works.
So at the... You have your revenues and your expenses. If your expenses are higher than your revenues, just like your own budget, you have what's called negative free cash. In other words, you're in deficit. If your revenues and expenses are on the plus side, that's when we have certified free cash, which, like, this year and years past, we've provided four hundred thousand dollars to the school in free cash. We've used those items for doing capital for the schools. We've done those for the police department, for other town. So if there is certified free cash, my recommendation would be put at least half of that back into the stabilization fund and build that up, because FY twenty-twenty-two may not be any better. And I am very concerned about us utilizing all our funds and going down the path we did before, where this town had negative free cash, had an unaudible year, and those nightmares. And I'll tell you, I don't ever want to see us go back there.
Thank you. Now, this budget represents a balanced budget. Does it take into account at all that four hundred thousand dollars plus?
To answer the question?
You're speaking about the FY twenty budget with the four hundred thousand. Next year, the budget we're acting on is the FY twenty-one. They're two separate fiscal years.
Right. I think I see what you mean. So you would use the four hundred thousand plus from this year to balance out this year?
Correct.
Okay. And any surplus with them go to free cash?
Correct.
And from the free cash, you're saying that should not go back to staffing, but you would recommend it be go back to the stabilization fund?
I'd say stabilization fund. We may need it for shoring up our budgets as well if state aid comes in even lower. I think people need to understand, there's a good possibility where you see a fifteen percent reduction in state aid. So I don't think we should be counting our chickens yet.
All right. Thank you for answering the question.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dom Camerano. I support the budget and everything Derek's done, but I do have a question for Attorney Bowen and the administrator. What is the legality of taking money from the Pollution Control Enterprise Fund, and will there be any repercussions from it? Because not all of our Wareham residents pay into it. So it's like they're paying more for the budget than people who don't pay a sewer bill. And is that going to be legal, and will there be any repercussions? Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I know you... I mean, Madam Moderator, I know you asked for town council, but that's not a transfer out. That's for all the work the town does on behalf of the enterprise, for the health insurance that we pay for the enterprise fund employees, for the other general insurance, for workers' comp insurance, the accounting we do on it. So that's, if you remember, we had the Department of Revenue come down, examine what we're doing. So this isn't... I think there's a little confusion that...
It's not.
What's that?
It's not how it's worded. It says transfer from funds. Doesn't say allocation for work done, you know. I've just...
Yeah. Well, if you remember, when we did the annual town budget, it talked about the offset for things that we are allocating within the town's portion of the budget. So it's, if you will, a gazinga and a gazaga.
That makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article seven? On my left?
Keith Duffy, Precinct One. I just had a question on the education, transportation. Might be related to what we just talked about, but we've had the kids not... Well, the schools closed for about a third of the year, but they're asking for an increase in the transportation funds. Shouldn't there be several hundred thousand dollars left in the account? Would that be transferred to the next fiscal year?
To answer the question?
He's asking about increase in transportation funds. I think it's just the way it was set up.
Yeah, because the buses haven't been running for about three months, so you should have a lot of fuel cost not spent.
Sir, I think you're right. It's what we were speaking about with the chairman of the school committee before. This is the FY twenty budget. What we're voting on is the FY twenty-one budget. So any monies that the school did not expend, unless it's grants or something like that that the schools hold on to, it goes to the general fund. And if you have more revenue or less expenses than your revenue, that becomes free cash. That doesn't go over from one budget cycle to another. So what they don't expend this fiscal year does not automatically go into their budget next year. And one of the things we do have to think about is how our transportation's going to look with COVID-19 and the costs associated with that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on the budget? I know we've done it a different way, but I hope this worked out for you. Seeing no one else standing, this does require a two-thirds vote because there is money coming from the stabilization fund. I'm going to try for unanimous. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? It's unanimous. Please remain seated for just a second. There's two things I want to do. I know we all want to leave as quick as possible. I want to acknowledge Selectman Mary Bruce, who has given this town her time and energy and effort for the last three years. Mary, we want to thank you for all that you've done and for your time that you've worked on behalf of the town. Thank you very much. I also want to thank all of the people that helped to put this together because it was an enormous task. If you would, I'm going to ask for a motion to dissolve this meeting.
Motion to dissolve the warrant.
We don't take that up because it's a town election.
Right. So we never...
No, we never address that. No, that's...
Do we pass over?
We... The town election is set by day...
No action necessary.
So there's no action necessary.
Okay. I just imagine so. Thank you.
Point of order on my left? Okay. If you would, please, in order to keep everybody safe... Do we have a second on the motion to dissolve?
Right.
We have a motion to dissolve. I now declare that this meeting has ended. Will you please exit? Yeah, all those in favor, please raise your cards. You can tell I want to get everybody out. Anybody opposed? Okay. When you exit, please start with the last row. Let them get out a little bit, and then the next row can come down, just so that we safely distance going out and that we're not all going at the same time. So if the last row would like to exit on the exit door on my left, you can start the parade going out. And again, thank you all for coming. I know it's a difficult choice to make to want to come out, but on the town's behalf so that we have monies for June thirtieth, I know that it's greatly appreciated.
Nice job, Claire. You did a great job. Two more. Thank you. Bye, Michelle.
See you later, chief.
Bye, Mike.
Bye, John.